Let's all stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, do we deserve it, the certification of the meeting?
The meeting has been advertised according to sunshine law.
And in short, unfortunately for all.
Chairman Beniro.
Here.
Mayor Melham.
Here.
Mr. Zan Gary.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mr. Banda.
Here.
Mr. Bowles. He's here, Mr. Corbo.
Here.
Mr. Graziano.
Here.
Ms. Rico. Ms. Guaman. Ms. Anogorado. Mr. Guyan.
Here.
Mr. Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
President.
And Ms. Sabita, here.
Great. Application before the board, we have PB 2017, 11 Franklin Avenue, block 2301, Lot 1. The applicant, 11 Franklin Redeveloper LLC, is seeking minor subdivision approval and proposing to construct a coffee service outlet with drive-through facility used to operate it by Starbucks. In order to avoid any possibility of conflict of interest, I'm going to recuse myself because I own property adjacent to this, and our vice chairman, Mr. Conti, is going to chair the meeting. So, Mr. Conti, would you like to take over?
Sure. Is, who's representing the applicant tonight?
I am.
Where are you? Okay.
Lisa John Bossa.
All right, you're ready to go?
Good, how are you? I'm ready.
All right, go ahead.
All right, so, good evening. For the record, my name's Lisa John Bossa with the law firm, P. Z. Shaheenian and Jan Tomasi, on behalf of the applicant, 11 Franklin Redeveloper. As was stated, tonight, we're here for a minor subdivision approval, along with site plan approval for proposed Starbucks. As most of the board would recall, the applicant is the designated redeevelper of the former Roche site. It's been before this board on several occasions, including subdivision approval. We're here tonight in connection with Lot 1, which is what we've called the remainder lot. This lot, we're seeking to subdivide into two proposed lots. Proposed Lot 1.04, which will be the location of the proposed Starbucks, and for which we're seeking site plan approval. And proposed Lot 1.05, which will be a future development site. There's nothing that's proposed as far as improvements related to that site this evening. Tonight, we intend to call two witnesses. We have Franz Lackey, who's our civil engineer, and Charles Dietz, who's our architect. So, with that, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to call our first witness.
You'll go right in.
Okay, Franz.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Franz.
Hi, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, or help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and spell your last name.
Franz Lackey, L.A.K.I.
Thank you.
Franz, if you could, could you briefly state your educational and professional background for the board?
I work for SSI Consulting Engineers.
I'm sorry, I, it just cut out for half a second after you work for.
Okay, I work for SSI Consulting Engineers, we're the civil engineers on this project. I have a master's and bachelor's degree from NJIT in civil engineering. I've been a licensed engineer for past five or so years, and practicing civil engineer, engineering for the past 10. I'm licensed in New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania, and I've been presented in front of numerous boards before.
All right, we accept your witness as an expert.
Thanks. And Franz, you were the preparer of the site plans that were submitted to the board in advance at tonight's meeting?
Yes.
And you're also familiar with the subdivision that's proposed, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, if you could, could you, for the board, give them a context of the existing conditions and location of the subject property?
Okay, the, I'm trying here, I'm, am I able to share my screen? Yes.
You are able to share.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen here. There we go. Okay, so, this sheet here is within the site plan packages that we had submitted. It is S1, the overall site plan. So, this is the Hoff, the La Roche redevelopment site. It has been before this board several times, for, for, two parcels that have already been developed. One is extra space self-storage, and one is Wawa on the site, extra space in this area, Wawa over here. It fronts on Franklin Avenue to the east, and Mill Street to the north. There's the Claire Moss Hospital to the south, and a mix of commercial and residential units to the west. The proposed, the proposed subdivision here is this remainder Lot 1, which is this whole area, which we are proposing to subdivide into two lots, 1.05, the bigger lot, and 1.04 is the smaller lot. The site plan application before you tonight is for this smaller Lot 1.04, which we're proposing a Starbucks.
And with respect to the zoning, the zoning's controlled by the Roche redevelopment plan, is that correct?
Correct.
And the subdivision that's proposed to create the two lots, it's in compliance with the requirements for subdivision as far as lot area?
Correct.
Okay, then if you could go into greater detail related to the proposal for Starbucks, please?
Okay. So, I'm bringing up Exhibit 1 here, is the rendered site plan. Large file, kind of stuck there. Rendered site plan of the Starbucks facility. To the right on this side is where the Wawa is. This is the new signalized intersection that has been installed on Franklin. And this whole area is the Lot 1.04. We are proposing a 2,590 square foot Starbucks building in this area, along with a total of 50 parking spaces, 17 along this edge here, five in the back, two ADA spaces, to make three in the front, and then 25 along the Franklin frontage. There is, as part of this site, there is a drive-through, which has queuing for 11 cars. The, there is a dumpster enclosure is in the rear of the building here, so that the refuse collection truck can come in from either direction up this road, pull in, get the trash, and be able to get out pretty easily. We're proposing all sidewalks are all going to be ADA compliant. We are, let's see. The required parking on this site is, there are 18 required spaces. We are providing 50. Zoom in here a little bit better. So, we are providing, we're proposing landscaping along the edges of the drive-through to screen the drive-through from the remaining, remainder of the property, along with miscellaneous landscaping to enhance the building itself. As you notice, there is a large portion of the site over here, which is to remain vacant. At this time, we're proposed to cede it, so it'd be a nice lawn area in, until something else could be developed there. The applicants potentially another retail, or another restaurant or retail establishment in this area, but that'll all be subject to future applications to go forward. The entirety of this, the site will all be lit by LED lights. They are, there's a, they all meet the code standard from the redevelopment plan of being minimum of .5 foot candles, it meets the minimum lighting requirements for the whole site. As the borough engineer brought up, or the township engineer, Tom, had brought up, you would like to see that the lights match the remainder of the development, which all site lighting will match, will be revised to match those fixtures that were used elsewhere. I'm going to bring up the enlarged site plan, not rendering to get a little more detail here. Let's see, so we, for stormwater on this site, we have sized our stormwater system to accommodate both the existed, the application in front of you for the Starbucks, as well as any potential development in this lawn area. It is likely to be oversized by the time this whole area is completely developed, which is a benefit to the site. I, so we are requesting a few variances on here, in terms of, one of which is for loading. And we are not proposing a loading space on this site. Starbucks does not require one, or for their operations, all deliveries from Starbucks is, all deliveries from Starbucks are made off hours, or off-peak hours, I should say. The hours of the Starbucks itself are from 5:30 a.m. to 10 p.m. Deliveries will be between 6 p.m. and 5:30 a.m.
Do you know the frequency of the deliveries?
The deliveries will be once a day, and it takes approximately 30 minutes to unload the trucks. So, it's a relatively quick, quick delivery operation in and out. And the delivery drivers are able to access the building off-hours when it's closed.
Thank you. Yeah, we're.
In terms of hours for the built, for the Starbucks, they are 5:30 a.m. to 10 p.m. A few operational items for the Starbucks itself, they expect to have employee 20 to 25 people total. There's three shifts of five to six employees per shift. They, let's see, what else we really have? Talked about loading up.
Yeah, if I could just ask a few questions about the site plan?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the proposed use, the Starbucks with a drive-through, that's a permitted use within the redevelopment plan?
Yes.
Um, as far as the building location, the building itself, does it comply with all the setback requirements of the redevelopment plan?
Yes.
We do, there was identified in the CME letter, a setback related to the location of the parking spaces. Could you discuss that some?
So, in the CME letter, they identify a variance required for parking within the front yard setback, which is in this area here. This dash line is a front yard setback. So, these, there's about 20 spaces here within, parked within the front yard setback. However, they are about, the curb line is about 24 and a half feet from the curb along Franklin. So, it's setback, the parking spaces are setback substantially from Franklin Avenue itself. This whole slope here is a relatively steep slope that will be grassed and present a, a good lawn-looking area as a view from Franklin itself. There was, in the past, a dedication along this, this redevelopment site dedicated 10 feet along the entire frontage of Franklin. And they dedicated it to the municipality and the county. So, I, when the redevelopment plan was initially created, there was actually 10-foot, feet-deep more frontage, and the frontage was closer to Franklin Avenue.
Franz, and the required setback, front yard setback is 15 feet, is that correct?
15 feet, yes.
Yeah, and you said that visually, from the curb line, these proposed parking spaces are going to be 24 feet back, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so visually, it will give the appearance that we are in compliance with that front yard setback requirement then?
Yes.
And is there any sort of benefit for providing parking along the perimeter of a site, rather than the interior?
So, especially for a use like this, with the drive-through use, it is nice to have the parking along the perimeter, and keep too many cars really from accessing the middle of the site. With the, the restaurants are able to have, this restaurant particularly, is able to have 1,000 feet of patio area for outdoor dining. And that is, what makes that able to happen is by having more parking along the exterior of, the exterior of the perimeter road. It also, by adding as much parking along the perimeter, it adds more parking for future development within the redevelopment zone itself, in order to be able to share parking and have the interconnected parking lots that the redevelopment plan really requires. So, when, it speaks, within the redevelopment plan, to interconnect the roadways, interconnect the parking lots, and by providing more parking along the exterior of the roads, both up front here, we're able to possibly free up more spaces along the edges for uses other than the Starbucks within the redevelopment zone.
Thank you. And you touched on a little bit connectivity. Can you discuss how the site works as far as sidewalks and connectivity to the greater redevelopment area?
Okay, so, the, let's pull up, I'm going to go back over to the overall site plan, so we can see the redevelopment area a little bit better in here. Not zooming in right, but, so, there are proposed ADA accessible sidewalks throughout this development. We are actually proposing to widen the sidewalk that's currently along the main entrance to the site, from five feet to eight feet wide, provide a larger island in here to promote more foot traffic from Franklin Avenue up into the site, to access the various uses here, whether it's the Starbucks here, any potential use throughout the rest of the site. And there are, is a crosswalk and sidewalk connecting the entrance walkway to the Starbucks, along with an ADA sidewalk connecting along the drive aisle to connect to these parking spaces, and anything future up in this area. One thing I will, I will note that it came up in the review letters we have, we have had, and we propose to add in a sidewalk connecting these parking spaces on this side to the Starbucks with the crosswalk, that will connect it directly into the patio area, to have some better safety and interconnectivity in that way.
Thank you. And as far as signage, there was, if you had to discuss the freestanding sign and its location, or locations?
So, we are proposing two freestanding monument signs. As for the redevelopment plan, we are permitted one per frontage, provided that they have a 10-foot setback, they meet the size requirements. So, we're providing one monument sign in this area here, and another one in this area up here, so that in either direction you're coming into the site, you can see that the Starbucks is here.
And the location and size of those signs, they're in compliance with the redevelopment plan?
The location and size are, yes.
How about the lighting?
So, the, the lighting is proposed to be internally illuminated, and that would require a variance by this board.
And there is also, if you could talk about the directional signs in the CME letter, it was indicated that the directional signs required a variance related to pole mounting. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. There are directional signage for the drive-through, as the entrance of the drive-through telling customers where to go, as well as a exit-only, "thank you for coming" sign at the front of the store, at the exit of the drive-through. Those are both pole-mounted signs. It was our interpretation that the directional signs were exempt from the pole-mounted ordinance, or the redevelopment plan. However, as the Marian had pointed out in her review letter, that this is, that they would require a variance.
Are we requesting that variance tonight, or are we going to seek to comply with the requirement of the code?
We can, we can switch these to monument-type signs per other Starbucks standards that have been used elsewhere to comply, and those will be submitted to the engineer and the planner for confirmation on compliance.
And then lastly, you were in receipt of Mr. Hertz's review letter dated November 10th, 2020?
Yes.
And you review those comments with the applicant, and they can comply with all those comments?
Just take a quick spin through them all. Yes. Yes, we can comply with those comments.
Great. Thank you, I have no further questions.
Thank you.
I have one question regarding the area that is the lawn. If that is going to be developed in the future, will it require a subdivision, or will it become part of this lot?
The intent is for it to be part of this lot at this time, but we have no immediate plans for it, so.
So, is some, are you building in some of that parking, and some of those elements now into this development? Because I know, it's noted that you have more spaces than required.
Yes, so we are providing more spaces than required. So, some of that parking is built in to this. However, if we need more parking for a future use, we will add more parking as necessary.
With the parking spaces on the south end, along the drive-through, do you foresee any problem putting a crosswalk across the, the exit to the drive-through?
No. The main queuing is all up in this area, so there, we're planning on putting a crosswalk straight across here, and it should be little impact from the traffic.
The landscaping won't be in such a manner that it might obscure a person walking, it'd be low, low, you know, the landscaping won't be too, too large there, because I noticed you said you wanted to create some screening.
So, we are creating screening along the edge here, however, we're kind of stopping the screening when it gets to the front of the building, mainly so we don't obscure sightlines of the building itself, so the cars will be able to see the pedestrians.
The pedestrians we see.
Yep.
And also, on the setback in the front, you said that we're at 24 feet, so would we inevitably be at 14 feet with the 10 feet that the developer dated to the town? So, we're at 24 minus that 10?
It would be, we would be closer to 12 or 13 feet-ish, right around that number.
It's only a couple of feet that, that the variance would require in that one section there?
Yes, if that area was not already dedicated, correct?
Right, okay.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions on the board?
Um, I actually do, I don't, and I don't know if this pertains to you, but from Franklin Ave, what's to stop them cars from making that left-handed turn into the Starbucks?
Good question.
Hey, Lawrence, I've asked the applicant to put a concrete island in there, so to force only right-hand turns in and out. He said he would comply with that, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tom, was that written into your letter that they agreed to?
Yes.
It was.
I, I just have just one question, one of my comments was about a dual drive-through lane. I know the zoning board just heard McDonald's, you know, most of these fast-food places with drive-throughs are looking for dual lanes to at least the, the menu board. After that, they usually go to single lanes, and what is your, what is Starbucks's
intentions?
posture on that, yes?
Yes, so, that's, that's a few items with that. One of which is, because of the COVID virus, everyone is doing more drive-throughs, so I've noticed areas, they've been having makeshift second lane drive-throughs and whatnot, and having someone out there with an iPad and taking orders and whatnot. So, in terms of something like that, increasing drive-through, we're actually providing a walk-up window in the front as well, for, basically trying to COVID-proof a design, keep people outside. However, Starbucks has no intent of ever requiring needing the extra drive-through lane, since they do have a substantial queuing in here. But if that need were to arise, we can squeeze another queuing area to fit three, four extra cars before the menu board, and then they'll merge together and finish out the drive-through.
Yeah, and because of their operation, the, to be made, you know, orders of coffee, it's not that easy. You don't make it as fast, so there's really not that need for that dual drive-through. You know, they, Starbucks actually prefers the single lane, so it takes a little bit longer for that person after they order to get through to the window.
So, then there would be a window that they order at, and a window that they pick up at?
Yes.
Because this drawing actually shows as poorly as it does, it shows one, one site, one window.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't mean a window. Franz, you can explain where the, where the menu board is, and then the link to go over to the pickup window.
Then the pickup, I got you.
Yeah.
So, there's also, as is popular now, mobile orders as well, which deters some of the drive-through, because people don't like to wait in the drive-through lane. They are able to place their order via their cellphone and pull into one of these spaces. Actually, I believe this space here is, Starbucks may want to dedicate this as a mobile order only, where they will pick up, and the coffier will be brought directly out to them. It's, those are all items just to lessen the impact on the driveway, drive aisle.
Mr. Conti, I have a question.
Who has a question?
I do.
Ready?
At the Wendy's on Franklin Avenue. It's almost space.
It it's almost basically set up like this with me, where they come in from the street, they go around to the board and they come out on the other side. And that traffic since COVID has been backed up on Franklin Avenue. I mean, it's really lined up. And I'm wondering if that might be a future problem, how you're going to come in and line up.
That's I don't see the similarity there with with the Wendy's on Franklin Avenue. This, the the entrance is all the way up on the I guess that would be the west side, the top, the top portion.
Yeah.
So Wendy's would start a lot closer to the sidewalk.
I I agree with you, Mayor.
I think another difference is that kind of the the entrance to the drive-through is on the interior of the site. It's not backing up onto the main road. Big difference between McDonald's and the Wendy's. Wendy's actually backs up onto the main road, which is the problem. This, this, this entrance is on the interior of the site, so we can wrap around a little of the whole site. I don't think it's the same.
Wrap around.
There's more than 11 cars, which is quite a few cars. But that at least will be off the road. It'll be on-site.
I I spoke with Avison Young today and I I understand Starbucks only wants to, you know, desires a single lane, but it may be necessary to have two, so any I think we just want a little caveat in the resolution that any future development that you'll you'll be able to accommodate another lane if if need be. Just remember that right now, there's no one on the other side of the street from you, but there may be a numerous amount of residential, if it's ever approved on the on the other side of the street, so you can't be blocking that westerly drive. So as long as you are prepared to accommodate in the future, if it's needed, I I think we're, I think we'll be okay.
Andy, I I have a few comments if I can.
Excuse me, Michael Gadd. I'm sorry. I was muted.
So I have three, three comments and I'll take them by by order of not necessarily importance, but from from a knowing where the future development may be going, that the township is in talks now. And Mr. Harris alluded to some, the township's in talks now with other parcels of this overall property and thinking about what may come on the westerly side of this lot. So my first comment is with regard to the dumpster. I see where the dumpster is, and I think that that may obstruct some walkability to other portions, other lots. Is there, is there a reason why it can't be in that little lawn area on the south westerly side right there? I I just think the placement of that dumpster is is quite unique and I think it would interfere with some ability to to walk and to get to other portions of this property. Either that or the southeast-erly side of that lawn area. I mean, just that's, I got two other comments, but that's really my first one.
Okay, so our thought to keep the dumpster within the interior of this site was actually to benefit some of the other developments. This way we could in the future as as you you allude to, future development, which will most likely take this road, extend it straight up. So then we could add more parking along here with some landscaped islands between different every so so often. And trying to avoid having a dumpster right at the end for this intersection.
That makes total sense for for that section. How about then on the east-erly side?
Down over here?
Yeah.
So over here, we have a lot of there's some grading challenges in here because this is a steep slope coming in here. And in terms of having the refuse truck picking up garbage from here with the main access or and and access coming right off of Franklin and having some visibility challenges particularly there. We just feel it's, it works kind of best up in that corner.
I mean, it seems like you thought it out pretty thoroughly.
Yes.
Okay, so my next two comments are, as you exit, as you exit the drive-through, so if I'm going to exit the drive-through and I'm going to make a right-hand turn, and now I want to make a left, after I exit the drive-through, I make a right, and then I want to make a left to actually exit the property, seems like there's a lot, there's a lot happening right there. You could have cars coming at you in either direction. You could have a car from above you from the from the west coming at you to exit, you could have somebody coming in. It just seems like that exiting the drive-through, making a right and then making a quick left to try and exit the property, that little intersection that's being created there just seems problematic to me.
There, there are so some challenges with that, which is also one of the reasons why we kind of stopped the large landscaping more down here. So as the cars pulling out, they're able to see pretty far back if there's any car coming from this this direction. And as you're pulling forward, you're going to have a clear view of what's happening right up in here. So I don't really think that there's going to be too much of a of a challenge there.
Unless unless somebody's in that parking spot, and that's my third comment, unless somebody's in that parking spot directly in front of you and they're backing up right there.
Yes.
That's my third comment, by the way.
Okay. Yes, that 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 does present some I guess, I guess, safety challenge there. However, it's there is substantial visibility and being able to see what this car or any of these cars are really doing. I know.
Coming at you in three directions, though.
Yeah. So Franz, could we just eliminate that stall at the corner there?
I mean, you do have over, you're you're overparked, right? So I I just think that you you have now a hot cup of coffee in your hand and you got cars coming at you from three different directions. It's, you've got to look left, look right, and and you're going to miss something, I think. But I think it's an easy recommendation, since we are overparked, to maybe just sacrifice that one spot there.
Yep. Where we can do that.
That's, that's, those are my comments.
What's, what is the length of the driveway in that section that we're just discussing? At entrance?
From here?
The driveway to Franklin Avenue.
This here? Hang on, give me a second.
60 feet?
I can get you the exact number here. About 75 feet.
That's even longer. I don't know. Do we, do we put something? Do we put a stop sign? Do we put something there to try to get drivers coming off of Franklin Avenue, making that right to slow down as they enter the the complex? Because following up on what Mr. Malian said, there's a lot happening there, and if somebody comes off the street quickly, things could get ugly in that spot. I don't know. It's not a great design.
Well, Andrew, even getting to what you and Mr. Mayor said, even coming in and out of there, like the cars, I think there should be some type of sidewalk there because if I'm coming from Clara Mass, I'm not walking all the way down. People are going to walk right up and down that driveway.
Right. Right. I think that that it's that's problematic.
There needs to be a sidewalk on that east-erly side.
So for.
Through the driveway? You have access coming from.
Patty, we couldn't hear what you just said. Could you repeat that?
Do we need that driveway there when you have the other one? Which is you have a light there, you have it a little bit more safety than that particular driveway? I don't know if that helps.
I can agree with you, Patty. I'd say i- if it's possible, eliminate it. You have a more controlled entrance and exit with the main entrance. And if you close that off, you eliminate all these potential traffic problems. Because even if you look at the first couple of spots in that area, even if you give up that one spot, the second spot's not much better. If somebody decides to go back out and go north, they're backing out into the drive-through.
So yeah, let me just butt in if I can, the that, you know, that entrance and exit, they're only right-hand turns. And we have to keep in mind the connectivity that those two lanes right there, the in and out, they may very well continue straight one day and continue to the to to the other lots. So I think having them is important. I just think getting it right is also important, though.
I also see that as problematic because if that becomes a thoroughfare to the back lot, you have 17 parking spaces that you have to pass by. You have all the customers and I've been, I don't go to Starbucks, but I witnessed Starbucks. They are a crowded establishment, so expect a lot of traffic. I don't know how you're going to access that back lot through that side alley with all that, with everything else that we're talking about right now going on. I would think that's going to just be a problem, a bottleneck. I would expect that people would use the main entrance.
I think the thought was they they would. This is a secondary, but I'll let the planner or or even Marion butt in if need be.
So is your, is your traffic engineer going to testify?
We can have him testify, yeah.
There were questions in my report that you he he might want to address.
Yes.
Yes, so our traffic engineer can testify to some some of your concerns. Some of the the items that we can solve a little bit is some of the these spaces can also be designated as employee-only for Starbucks, so you don't have a lot of turnover. It's there for, they're there for eight hours at a time. So you have a little less pedestrian crossover. And these ones on this end are may cross on up up here, will provide a crosswalk as well. To in to control this area a little bit better, we can provide a stop sign from the traffic coming this direction in order to just kind of slow everything down a bit. And it it is a right in and right out, and as the mayor has pointed out, we feel that this is going to be important for the connectivity of the entirety of of the site as well, beyond just this application.
I I do think you need to 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 kill the the at least one or two of those other parking spots, though, in front of the right there.
Yes, yes, I, we we will kill at least one, probably two in here.
I agree with you, Mayor. I think you should eliminate two of them and put a stop bar before the right where the the one handicap ramp is, so you have a stop at coming out of the coming out of the drive-through and a stop before the drive-through exit lane, and then that way I think it'll control things a lot better than that way. Yeah, yeah, somewhere, yeah, eliminate the, exactly.
Yep.
Can I just ask you a follow-up question on that? That might have been answered already. That driveway, the south driveway with a right in and right out. Tom, I'm not sure if you mentioned it. I see that it's going to be marked with a right turn only. I think according to the paper here, it says it's going to be a 24-inch-wide stop bar. Is that the location you were talking about, having some type of physical meeting or barrier to stop people from making a left onto Franklin Avenue?
Yes.
Because where that's located, people on the curve kind of area, people making a left. I I mean, I I appreciate all the concerns you have on the inside of the lot, but I'm looking at that as that's going to definitely be a problem on the outside of the lot on Franklin Avenue if people try to make a left-hand turn.
No, no, and he just showed it on a drawing. There's, he, you know, I asked him to put a an island, a concrete island there, so you can't, you can't make a left in and you can't make a left out. Because if you remember, there was a driveway from the park right across from that that they closed because of all the accidents that were
Yeah, I remember.
caused there, yeah.
Okay, I see it now. I didn't, I was looking at the paper. I didn't see it on there. Okay.
I have a couple of questions for the engineer as well. They're minor. You've went through many of the items in my report already. One is, can you just confirm that all the electrical connections are underground?
Yes, they are.
And then, given that, can you give me the location of the transformers and any generators that you you'll have on site?
So those, the, there are no proposed generators at the time. The transformer will likely be in this rear area and we will properly screen it from everything. Yeah.
So you're going to, you're going to, you're going to screen, okay.
We will screen the transform.
I noticed that there's another one that's existing, that's adjacent to the main, the road that's in place with the traffic signalization. It looks like it's going to be adjacent to the main road coming in. I I think you can actually, you can see it, the the road that goes between the Wawa and 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 this site. That would need to be screened as well. It's it's existing and it's unscreened right now.
And it's it's part, it's on this lot?
It is on this lot, yes. It looks like it's right near where your road is or right at the corner where the where the monument, where the monument sign is identified as, but somewhere around there.
Yeah, so that that is servicing the traffic signal and we will, if we can screen it, that's no problem.
Okay. And then the, and another, the other item in the report, you addressed the front yard parking and and the space available there, but there's still lots of available space and there's no reason not to landscape in front of the site, even within the right-of-way. That's pretty common that that could be done with county approval. So that's, the the interior landscaping is is fine and it and it's and it's conforming, but the front of the building and the front of the site has nothing and it's just grass and it'll eventually just be nothing. It's hard to maintain grass on a slope. It'll probably be easier to actually put some type of ground cover or some type of perennial at at least on the on the at the near the driveway. Is that something that you can look into?
Yes, we we agree to add in some landscaping in especially along Franklin to and obviously it has to be approved by the county as well. We will work with with them and and get something.
Okay, did you have, what's the status of the county applications?
They are pending. We will forward all correspondence to you guys as we receive it.
Okay, great. And then as a follow-up to the mayor's question about the 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 trash location, I was concerned about that as well. One of the the options that you have here is, and you see this on tight sites, you actually have the luxury of having this large area and you can spread out. But if this was a smaller site, you would generally, you would see two or three parking spaces taken up with the with the loading corral. And you you actually could, you could take along the 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 side property line with the hospital, the of those 17 spaces, maybe, you know, two or three spaces up at the top for for the for the the trash enclosure, which is possible, and then maybe replace those spaces somewhere else. I mean, you have the whole grass area, you can just put them over to the the to the right of the the drive-through aisle. I mean, so there's different options. I I think you maybe should consider that and and then it's possibly even easier for and shorter distance to get from the restaurant to to the trash area because it's pretty far away. That's something to think about because it's, and there shouldn't be a slope issue there. And it will, it will make the roadway for future connections cleaner and not have this large dumpster area right on the main road.
Well, I'm going to that, Mayor, what about those five spots in the back?
Yeah, they could replace, they can just extend them over and make that additional parking and then put the trash over over to the side.
We'll even put the trash. Well, you don't want the trash facing that back lot, you said, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, it's best if the trash is facing into this site itself. And this way, now it's the way it's designed, it's facing out into the, into, it will eventually be a road that will be used um, by anybody using this project um and any project and neighboring project as well. So i- i- it would be an improvement to relocate it and you have the space to do it.
We, we will um, we will visit tho- those suggestions. Um, we'll look to move it over in this area. Or um, somewhere outside of this, whether it's, it's somewhere along here, we'll, we'll got the um, the visibility as well as the refuse truck um turning and, and being able to access everything. And we will evaluate a, a different location.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
I follow up on one last thing to Mr. Haritz. When it comes to that island being proposed, because I've seen a couple of islands proposed to prevent turns that are built rather poorly and people are still able to make the turn. That I would be very specific with that island if you're trying to uh prevent people from making a very dangerous left-hand turn. That it's somehow curved with that entrance so that it really is impossible to make that turn. Because the seven eleven, for example, on, on uh, uh, Bellevue Avenue, on, we, we made them put an island. The island is just a little hump in the concrete that anybody could drive over. So it doesn't really prevent what we asked them to accomplish with putting that little tiny island there. And the same thing could happen here. If that island isn't built specifically to just accept a car making a right from Franklin heading south, people are going to still make that left-hand turn in. So I would just say to follow up, be specific about how that that island is built so that people can't make the left-hand turn.
Yes, it will be a relatively substantial island and, and not just, as you said, a bump in of, of concrete that people are just going to run right over.
Yeah, cause we, I've seen it in other sites and we had it, you know, on one of our projects too. We wanted to put a, a little island. It was a very small site. But it's just a little lump of concrete. You could drive right over it and people do.
Yeah, we'll submit the design to Mr. Harris for his review and approval to make sure that it's substantial enough.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I just have one, one more to, and, and I don't know who, Lisa, you might be able to answer this. Where, where do we stand environmentally on the, the two lots that you're uh, you know?
Yeah, so we're
that you're creating.
We're, we're close to cleanup. The R A O should be issued within, you know, a month or two. So uh, they're well along their way with the environmental cleanup.
Do you have an R A O for residential on the back piece?
Uh, I, Franz, maybe you can answer that question.
Yeah, I, I can answer that. Um, so right now we're looking at getting um, the R A O for the entire site. The remainder of the site based on the current redevelopment plan, not for the residential. Um, the residential will be another um environmental cleanup uh, practice. But that will be handled. The, the R A O specifically for this Starbucks facility um, should be coming within the next month or two relatively soon.
Does that work with the, now you should be able to answer this, Lisa. Does that work with, I saw there was an agreement between Roche and uh, and Sunny that the, you, you have to have an, the R A O in place, I guess for residential before you rezone the back, back portion?
So I think she's having. We can't hear you, Lisa, if you're talking, but um, there you go, yep.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, we believe that uh, we can rezone it. We just can't go forward with the um, with the actual affirmative construction until that R A O is issued for the residential.
We really can't hear Lisa very well. Is everybody else picking her up?
Yes.
Thankfully.
Very low.
Does this help? Can you hear me better?
No.
For what it's worth, I, I, I hear you fine, Lisa. I don't know if everybody else can hear you or, or not here. Some seem to have, be having problems, but I, I hear you perfectly fine.
Not at all.
Um, I, I heard you when you had the earphones off, but not with them on.
Now, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
So that's fun.
Right.
Okay, so to answer the question on the R A O, we believe we can rezone it before we get the R A O for the um residential remediation. You just can't go forward with the affirmative construction of the site. But that's really not necessarily related to this application since we're not at that point yet.
Does any other board member have a question? Does anybody in the public have a question?
I do. Uh, two questions actually. Uh, on the south side, there will not be a way to get from this property to the parking lot of Five Franklin, correct? A gate or walkway?
Franz?
Five, um, just trying to bring up this. So Five Franklin Avenue, where?
To your left.
That's south of uh,
It's south?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, there's no, there's no gate. The only access is via Franklin Avenue or the remainder of the redevelopment site.
Okay, and I think the next one is, it actually beats Tom Haritz. I don't know if the zoning laws have changed, but isn't it true you were not allowed to put two different uses on a single lot?
This is, this is a, the zoning for this property is the redevelopment plan, Vic. So it's not, it's not the regular zoning.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just have, okay, I just have one other question. Will it be, uh, I guess when you file your subdivision deeds, you're going to have to include uh cross easements for everyone else to be able to use to cross those lots?
Yes, we will do that.
Okay.
Anyone else in the public? If not, do you have another witness? Lisa?
Yes, I will, uh, we'll call our architect next.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and spell your last name.
Charles P Dietz, D I E T Z, managing member of the Dietz Partnership LLC Architects.
Thank you. Chuck, you've previously testified in Bellevue before and been qualified as an expert in architecture. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's fine.
Thank you. And you prepared the architectural plans and renderings that were submitted to the board in advance of tonight's hearing?
Yes.
If you could then uh, discuss the general layout of the Starbucks building and the building materials that are proposed for this site, please.
Okay, I'm just sharing my screen here. So my exhibits are a three-D color perspective rendering of the building taken from uh, inside the property along Franklin Avenue, looking towards the front of the Starbucks that you can see here. I don't know if you have to mark this as an exhibit, Lisa. And then I have just a single sheet that I could show everybody. That's what was submitted, or my black and white floor plan and elevations of the building. But if I could, probably most of my testimony will be with regard to the rendering. I think it shows the building and its uh, front area a lot better than my black and white drawings.
So we had previously submitted in advance of tonight's meeting the exhibits that were shown. One, if we can mark A1, which was the site rendering that was previously shown by the civil engineer. Um, and I can send in marked up plans to Corinne if that works for you. And then we can mark this as A2, which is the proposed Starbucks render.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, as it's been stated, we're proposing a single freestanding two thousand five hundred ninety square foot Starbucks restaurant, which will have its front entrance and outdoor seating area facing Franklin Avenue. The drive-through will be on the left side, or I believe that is the uh, west elevation. And then our rear uh, package will be our dumpster location and our utility locations. Uh, the building is made up of primarily three different materials. Uh, we have a brick veneer that you can see where the Starbucks signs are proposed. We're proposing a uh, a tall curtain wall, glass and aluminum storefront framing system. And we're also proposing around uh, the other three sides of the building. If you look right here, a natural style wood veneer, vertical in nature. And then to match that, we're also proposing a flat metal roof at the very top, which will act as a cap. And the soffit of that roof will actually be the same wood veneer that you see on the facade of the building. This is, these are materials that Starbucks have approved and like to use throughout the country in certain areas and especially here in the Northeast. And I know the township saw this prior and they were happy with this design. Uh, we think it's a nice, modern look. It's light, it's airy. I know you have an ordinance or redevelopment agreement that speaks about that the building should have a traditional base and cap. And as a uh, as an architect for many, many years, that's usually my design. I think we can say we are not proposing a traditional base in nature, cause the brick is a virtual, a vertical monolith that goes from the ground to the top. The glass does the same. And then we have brick and half wood. I do believe we have a cap in the fact that the most dominant feature on this building is kind of the free-floating flat roof at the top of the uh, of the building, which will go approximately halfway back on the full depth of the building. Uh, what you don't realize in this rendering, but if you look at our black and white submission or elevations, even with this flat roof, you can see that very top part of the glass is colored charcoal gray. That's actually spandrel glass. So the structure of the roof and the actual flat roof will be in that area. So the, the actual roof will be lower than that flat cap that you see, which will act as a parapet and a screening element for all the mechanical rooftops. Uh, if it actually, we determine that it can be seen from the rear of the property, from the back road or the future, hopefully residential development, we will provide a, a screening system for any of the equipment. But it is Starbucks uh, prototype ideal to create these parapets, knowing that they have rooftop equipment up there. Uh, so yes, we are, even with this design, we're able to maintain a three or four-foot high parapet, which will screen probably ninety percent of the units. And if they, it is determined, we can see it from the back, we'll provide some back screening uh, with some separate independent screening options. I think it's important and Franz touched on it uh briefly, we do have a large sidewalk or patio area in the front of the building. And I think in, in the world we live in today, uh, in the pandemic, I think Starbucks really wants to take advantage of this opportunity. And we're proposing twelve to fourteen seats outside with their tables and chairs and umbrellas for cover. Uh, they will be protected on the sidewalk area from both the cars and the balance of the site. And we'll sit behind a uh, a fenced area, a decorative fenced area, which will designate and define where these tables and chairs will be. Again, as, as Fran mentioned, we will have a walk-up window uh, which is basically right here, which is another new element. I've done many Starbucks and this will be the first one with a walk-up window. But I think Starbucks is really trying to stay ahead of the times and the ability to service their clientele, both with outdoor dining, the call-ahead order and pickup, whether they come pick it up at the window or it's brought to their car. The outdoor seating and the drive-through uh will certainly accommodate the bulk of their patrons on a daily basis in this part of the country, in this part of the state with the, the pandemic as we have, uh, we have to live with as we see. Uh, I think having this tall glass uh, really uh brightens and lightens the building and allows a lot of visibility into the store. And hopefully when we get back to normal and we're beyond this pandemic, we will be able to have Starbucks have their inside seating at the, at full capacity as well. I think it lets in the nice natural light. With the overhang, we will create some shadow and a little solar shading at the top of the building there. But I think with their decorative fixtures and, and everything that goes along with a Starbucks interior build-out, I think it's very pleasing to the eye uh, to have all this glass. And I think the mix of material, brick, uh, wood and uh, glass and aluminum really work well on this property. I think really the, the biggest thing that uh, was written in the, in the reports for us are the signs that we're looking. And these are from the Starbucks prototype. As you can see, uh, they have the six-foot diameter uh circular uh mermaid signs on both uh, the front entrance just above the walk-up window and on the side, on the sidewalk side. Uh, those are six feet in diameter and they, on the plans uh, is given as a dimension, they are twenty-eight point two seven square feet. So they do meet the requirements of your uh signage calculations. And I believe there's uh, four of those uh, on all four sides and three of the sides of the building. And then Starbucks written out uh in individual letters will be on the drive-through side. And that sign is eight foot six by eleven inches, so only seven point eight square feet. So again, it meets the ordinance. Uh, really what we're seeking a variance for is the number of signs. We're allowed two and we're proposing four. Uh, the drive-through sign logos that you see beside or below on all four elevations, below these uh disc lighting, uh lit signage uh pieces are being considered as directional. Uh, and Starbucks likes to have that. So anybody walks up, pulls up, they understand where the drive-through is. You basically make a uh, a clock, a counterclockwise loop around the building to get to the drive-through. Uh, I think proportionally they work with the facade and the dimensions of the building. Uh, the second variance for signage we're asking for is these are internally illuminated. And we asked the question, and I believe your planner did state internally illuminated is not backlit or a facade mount lit. So this would be a variance to have these discs internally illuminated. Uh, what we are proposing to be lit from the ground, you can just about see behind the fence here. And on this side here, a couple of feet off the ground, uh, we'll have some spots that are meant to actually create a glow to the underside of the roof level. They will not go up and be in the sky and creating light pollution, but they're meant to really accentuate uh, the beautiful form of this flat cantileter roof that's basically coming off the facade about three to four feet uh, in these three directions. So those uplights are there basically just to shine a little light at night along with the internal glow when the restaurant is open uh, to create a nice image and a very uh appealing image as you drive down Franklin or are, you know, making your way around the, the balance of the site at some of the other uh, buildings that are there. So all in all, I think uh, it's, it's a very attractive building. I think it's everybody, you know, I'm not a coffee drinker, but I know there, there are great service to many people that need their coffee every day. I think they're run very well and I think this application uh is really a positive note to add this type of uh use on this property. Uh, and you know, hopefully uh, everyone agrees and you see fit to approve this.
Thank you, Chuck. I have no further questions for him.
Does uh, anybody on the board have any questions?
No, Andy, not a question, just three very quick comments. Uh, love, love the grass, absolutely love the grass that's in this plan. Uh, hoping if and when anything goes adjacent, we're able to maintain some of that grass uh, because of the overlapping parking that we may have. I was going to ask a question about hiding mechanicals up on the roof, but that was already addressed. And uh, love the concept of the, the uplighting. I think that's gonna, that's gonna look great.
That's beautiful. Okay, anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? No? Okay. Lisa?
Thank you. Uh, our last witness is Matt Sekler. He is both our, our traffic engineer and he's also licensed as a planner.
Please raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Matthew Sekler. That is S E C K L E R, the principal at Stonefield Engineering. The principal at Stonefield Engineering Design. Address is ninety two Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Matthew, if you want, I'll leave the rendering up if you're going to testify planning wise for that.
Yeah, it'll be uh better looking than uh seeing more faces on this uh Zoom, so. You can leave that up.
Down too quickly, I apologize.
Matt, if you, if you could, please briefly give your educational professional background for the board.
Certainly have a bachelor's of science in civil engineering from Union College in Skidecton, New York. A master's in city regional planning from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional engineer and professional planner in the state and recognized a professional traffic operations engineer by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Been accepted before over a hundred boards in the state of New Jersey as a traffic engineer and over fifty boards as a planner in the state.
Board recognizes your witness as an expert.
Thank you. And Matt, in advance of tonight's meeting, you did prepare a report and submit to the board dated November fourth, twenty twenty?
That is correct.
Uh, if you could just briefly go through your findings and but more so, I think the focus is also on the comments that that came up by the the board tonight related to the traffic circulation.
Yep, absolutely. And again, uh, you know, I I don't want to belabor the board and go through uh long winded traffic testimony reciting uh chapter and verse from my trap, from my uh report. Uh, however, just to kind of summarize what we did as part of this report, we um we utilized some of the older traffic studies that were performed as part of the other developments on the site to account for their traffic as well as to account for a pre-COVID uh traffic uh or uh traffic patterns on the surrounding roadways, uh including Mill Street and Franklin uh and the existing site driveway that is signalized. As part of our study, we uh projected the amount of traffic that the Starbucks would generate. Um, Starbucks is considered a pass by type loot use, meaning that it draws in the majority of its customer base from cars that are already traveling by the roads today. Uh, even uh without the Starbucks being constructed, meaning that about half of their customer base are driving by today or in non-COVID times on Franklin Avenue during their normal morning commute. And then they'll have the ability to turn into the site either via left turns at the traffic signal or via right turns at the right in right out driveway that uh has been uh under much discussion. As part of our analysis, we found that the traffic generated by the site would not significantly change the level of service at on the surrounding roadway network. Uh, one of the key aspects of this project is the right in right out driveway. I think the mayor hit it on the head that that right in right out driveway not only uh is there to serve the Starbucks, but obviously with grander plans for future development on the site. Uh, that right in right out driveway again will be uh physically channelized. I think there were some comments earlier raised about the size of the island. Um, a lot of the other sites, and I think there was a seven eleven reference before. The island is designed for large wheel based vehicles to drive over because that may be the only access point that delivery trucks could access some of those smaller sites. This site, we will have a uh full height channelized island because any tractor trailers that would need to deliver perhaps to the other uses on the site, they could utilize the signalized intersection where left turns are permitted. Uh, and there's proper turning radii available uh at the uh, at the um intersection. So we, you know, can confirm, obviously the county would have to approve it, but we would uh be able to confirm that we would have a full height uh island to prevent any left turns being made because there are uh besides just having a high volume of vehicles on the road, there's also some significant um sight line restrictions based on the horizontal and vertical curvature of the roadway. Uh, but overall, in reviewing the site, we believe that the access points have been designed per industry standard. The Starbucks drive through design and we've designed a number of them uh has been uh designed to accommodate what you'd expect as your typical peak flow uh going through the drive through and also having the safety valve or what I consider a safety valve from a traffic point of view. Uh, having the pickup window on site uh is uh, you know, uh, I think we'll be able to handle not only uh your typical flow, but your, let's say, uh COVID or pandemic uh type operations uh that we're currently seeing out there in the world today. Um, just a couple of things to highlight in terms of the design of the drive through. Um, the order board uh or the order um speaker is located about seven uh car lengths from the pickup location. Uh, this is ideal in the industry. Typically look for five or six. We've even extended it to about seven cars out uh so that Starbucks has its time to basically prepare your your made to order drink. So the idea and be able to process as many cars through the drive through without delays uh means that the the drink or your order should be ready when you get to the window for pickup. Uh, you want to be able to basically, you know, uh have a cash exchange, a credit card exchange or an app exchange uh and then give the uh customer their their order and have them continue on their way. And having it be seven vehicles away allows for, you know, three minutes or or more of uh preparation time ins- inside the store, which allows for the order to be ready for when the customer needs it on their way out. Um, so overall, from a uh site circulation standpoint, I think we designed the site properly. I've heard a number of the comments raised by the um members of the board, including the mayor. I do agree, considering we have some of this excess parking, there's a number of parking stalls that we could eliminate uh that were highlighted uh in the vicinity of where the drive through exit is. I do think that we could also um provide some improvements and possibly this may be more so when the developments of the rear get um uh contemplated. Uh, but that crosswalk that is uh considered across the uh drive aisle um that uh crosses eventually the drive through, maybe that becomes a raised crosswalk so that it serves both as a uh a high visibility pedestrian crossing, but also uh as a way to manage speeds for vehicles that are driving towards the rear sections of the property. Uh, again, uh, you know, I think that, you know, could be under consideration as we uh hopefully develop the rear portions of the property. So from a traffic standpoint, again, I think we've met the statutory requirements for a redevelopment plan and being before the planning board uh and having designed a site that's both works safely and efficiently. Uh, Lisa, you want me to roll into planning and discuss?
Why don't we leave it to traffic for a minute and if the board has any questions, then we can put your planning hat on.
Sure.
All right, I had one question. It it really uh it has to do more with pedestrian traffic. One of the uh, I think somebody raised the question before about the south side of is there any, is is there any other way for pedestrians to get in aside from the main entrance to the site? Is there any other sidewalk that could go up that south side? Or are people going to wind up walking up that driveway? I think we addressed it before, but I don't recall uh what.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I was wondering, because if I came from Clara, I'm not going to walk all the way down this street.
Franz brought it up exactly.
Yeah. So again, I think the, and I I think Franz may have discussed it uh as part of the site testimony. I would say one of the challenges we have is not being able to provide an ADA compliant path, basically because of the grade coming up that driveway. Um, the sidewalk would not be ADA compliant if it was um built in that area. Again, I'm 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 not a a site engineer. I I can't speak to if that's still uh, you know, better off putting in a non-compliant sidewalk versus a, you know, no sidewalk at all. But I think that was the the main challenge in that area.
But so what would be the uh the final outcome? Could you put a non-compliant sidewalk? That would be safe enough? I mean, if if there's too much grade on the sidewalk, it's really not too safe for anyone. But trying to keep pedestrians out of that driveway uh might be a good idea.
Again, I think I'm gonna uh ask Franz uh perhaps to weigh in uh at this point. Uh, just because he would be the one to be designing that site aspect of it. Um, what he thinks that grade could be and if it's better to design a non-compliant sidewalk versus none at all.
I I have a quick question.
Can Franz follow up with that? Hold one sec, Patty.
Yeah, do you want me to answer now?
Yes, if you could, please.
So that that driveway there going up is is at a a ten percent grade. The maximum allowable ADA is eight percent and that's with um landings and railings and whatnot. What we can do, um, and I will confirm uh with the ADA complacency, um potentially put in a sidewalk with some stairs and and railings in there. Um, since there will be ADA access via Franklin and taking the the long route as you're, as you're talking about. So I understand you guys' concerns and and I will take a look at it. And if we can safely provide a sidewalk in there um with stairs or railings, however we need to do it, then we will. Um, but it, as long as we can safely do it.
Okay.
Hey, Franz, I'll I'll work with you, but that's covered by ProWag. That's not ADA there because it's a public access. So I think you might be able to get away with the and half the sidewalks of Belleville are more than ten percent grade. Okay, so uh, I think as long as the uh where your crosswalks are at comply, I I I don't think it's a
Yeah, okay. I I know there's um there are plenty of sidewalks I've walked on that that seem like they're twenty five percent. So but they're they're also not brand new. So we will comply with the applicable codes.
Yeah, I'll work with you with that.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Patty, did you have a question?
Uh, yes, I do. It's it's traffic related. Um, I'm wondering, because this had come up uh when Wawa was there, will there be any access to Mill Street and how much do you anticipate?
So I think your question, uh, because you're cutting out a little bit, was um regarding Mill Street and potential accesses to that area.
Right.
Okay. Uh, and again, I I think that maybe that goes back into the history of the redevelopment plan and some of the um conditions within that redevelopment plan that um allow for or require access to those areas. So again, we obviously will have cross access to get to the traffic signal, to get to the Wawa property. So if someone wants to get gas at Wawa and come to Starbucks, that is accessible. And again, I think that the overall uh approvals on this site uh in terms of redevelopment plan do allow for eventual access, cross access through and down towards Mill Street. So again, that does appear again as uh the redevelopment plan um uh gets developed over time. Uh, you know, that'll obviously be a a more popular route um to get in and out of that site, potentially avoiding some of the traffic signal congestion that exists today.
Right, that's somewhat my point because I know uh at this time, Mill Street is horrendous. So I'm looking to um what may happen if we further develop. The traffic starts edging out towards Mill Street to meet the light or, you know, I think there's going to be a lot of problems.
And again, I
Let me just, let me just say, and maybe I have the answers for that. There uh, there was always a the board is always looking for a left turn lane on Mill Street and on Park Drive. Uh, the the previous travel engineer for the other, the the previous developments dynamic did did prepare plans showing that and the county kind of uh preliminarily approved them. They're not fully designed. But the they, there are plans there that show a left turn lane coming down Mill Street to get and make a left onto Franklin and a left turn lane coming out of Park Drive to make a left onto Franklin. The the problem right now is that cannot be the county asks us not to construct that at this time because they are, they will be making improvements to the Mill Street and Franklin Avenue intersection. And they already have awarded a contract to have that work done. And once that work is completed and they close out their that project with the federal government, then we're free to to move ahead with the the improvements that you were you were looking for, Patty.
Yeah, it's part of our, the first time we appeared for our development application related to the overall redevelopment project. It was a requirement of this board that we dedicate a certain amount of frontage along Mill Street to do future improvements to the site, which um were were planned to be done for the last phase of development that that rear parcel lot one oh five that's being created tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was on the record and uh I'm happy with this plan.
Anybody else from the board have question? Anybody in the public have a question for this witness?
Um, I do. Mr. Conti, Michael Sheldon, forty seven Floyd Street.
Mr. Sheldon, go ahead.
Um, I looked over the traffic study report and there was one part of it that caused uh some real concern for me. Page three, it indicates that because of the COVID situation, Stonefield was not able to conduct uh current traffic counts at the two by intersections. Instead, they used manual turning movement counts that were conducted on Tuesday, March sixth, two thousand eighteen. That's two and a, over two and a half years ago, between the hours of seven AM to nine AM and again from four thirty PM to six thirty PM on that same day. Now, the putting aside the fact that those counts were conducted more than two and a half years ago and I obviously wouldn't take into consideration the recent opening of the Wawa store, which obviously is going to impact uh all the turning movement counts in that area. Uh, my other concern was, does anybody know offhand what was happening in our neck of the woods um in early March of two thousand eighteen?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer that question eventually, but let me give a little more background in.
Well, let me, let me just, let me just add one more.
The bridge, I'm sure the bridge was under construction, correct? That was the uh
Well, let me just add one thing before you 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 um add any comment or reply. If I looked at the uh weather records for March, early March of two thousand eighteen, from March first to March third, our area, the entire Northeast got hit with a major winter storm which uh dumped more than twenty inches of snow on certain parts of New Jersey and uh cost uh caused power outages for almost two hundred thousand New Jersey residents. Uh, just a few days later, starting on March sixth, the evening of March sixth through March seventh, we got clobbered with yet another nor'easter. So we had back to back major storms affecting this area during this period of time when this single one day statistically irrelevant traffic count was conducted. You know, the saying with any statistical analysis is garbage in, garbage out. You're using data that by its nature is highly suspect, highly specious. No effort was made in two and a half years to get more up to date, more relevant traffic data. Yes, I understand that COVID has been affecting us, but until just the last few weeks, when unfortunately COVID has roared back, uh, there was a a long period during the summertime when I assume somebody could have been sitting there in a car or on a corner with a clicker, keeping track or put up a a camera to monitor, to safely monitor the traffic situation. So you know, this is almost an insult to the the intelligence and a lack of respect to the planning board members to try to pass something like this by you to use really outdated irrelevant, meaningless data from two and a half years ago as the underpinning for all of the traffic analysis. So I just wanted to get this on record. Mr. Conti, you're, you know, sharing the meeting tonight. I would welcome your input. Uh, you, you and Patty both express real concerns about traffic movements, traffic volumes on this site. And you have to ask that basic question, is this traffic analysis, which is based on really old, meaningless data apropos to the discussion tonight?
Well, you know, that you guys can, you guys can now attack me and tell me how I'm wrong about everything.
Well, let me, let me just have one thought. But I I I agree with you on what you just said. The only thing that I will say is I don't know how far back this Starbucks proposal goes. And if it was after COVID, it it we, it wouldn't have been a good traffic study anyhow, again, because the roads have been so so quiet. So although he may have gone back to insignificant study, which I agree with you, if there was a a a major storm on that particular day, we wouldn't have had much traffic. I think the key to this whole development is the improvements that the county makes to to Franklin and Mill Street, which would allow some of this development to continue. Obviously, if it stays the same and we uh develop that back lot, we're going to have trouble. I agree that this traffic study in front of us is is sort of meaningless. I think a lot of the traffic studies we see are sort of meaningless. Um, because then there's practicality and we know when we're sitting in traffic, even when they tell us we're not supposed to be. So I think the improvements that the county plans on making will alleviate any traffic that this, I don't think that this site's going to cause major traffic anymore than the Wawa does. But again, we're in these COVID times and and so we don't really know the impact. Hopefully the improvement to the street will will alleviate all our problems.
I will, I largely, I largely agree with you, Mr. Conti. And um, you know, I'm glad that the uh expansion of both Franklin and Mill Streets are still on the table. As you may remember from the previous hearings on this, both Mr. Frant and Tony and I argued vehemently to for the 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 previous developer owner to seed that ten foot of frontage along both Mill and uh Franklin avenues to hopefully widen those roadways and put in proper lane, turning lanes, et cetera. I just hope that comes. I just hope that comes to fruition in all of our lifetimes. But I'm glad you remember it, and the rest of the planning board who was present at those meetings remembers it as well. And I hope you hold future development to their obligations to along with the county. I know the county has to weigh in on this project, but to make sure that those those roadways eventually sometime soon do get widened as we had hoped would happen, I guess, when this was project was first heard back in 2015.
I believe Mr. Harris has given us information that the county is moving forward, so hopefully we'll see that development happen soon.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Not not Dynamic did did another traffic study after the bridge was completed. Did you? Did you have access to that, Matt?
Yeah, I believe I've seen parts of that study as well. And and again, I think that was one of the things that I wanted to get at was that the this report was based on, obviously, a report that was done pre-COVID, pre-Wawa, as the as the resident had mentioned. We did include within our our study a surcharge on the roadway network based, you know, that included the Wawa trip generation, the self-storage trip generation, and even the pharmacy trip generation, because those were all been previously approved projects that were approved between when the traffic counts were done and when we prepared our study. Just to provide some other background, we were engaged with this project solely within the COVID era. This, you know, again, while obviously, there was a nice time period when this Wawa was constructed and there was no COVID going on. Again, this project, at least in terms of my engagement, was not contemplated where I would have gone out and just randomly done counts at this intersection. I would also state that we have been monitoring traffic flow and specifically during the morning peak hour, where we have been able to kind of come up with calibration counts. We have noticed traffic volumes even during the the better parts of the COVID shutdown have been about 25 to 30% less than what you were seeing pre-COVID. So again, even if we did counts out here, they likely would have been significantly less than what you'd expect under typical situations. And while I definitely respect the the background on on the count dates and conditions that existed when Dynamic did their traffic study at this board and obviously reviewed that report previously, I will state that that report was one of the back was used to basically design the traffic signal that's at our site today. And again, there was a post study that was done by Net by Dynamic. And again, I think at least as it relates to the design of that traffic signal, clearly, there was some useful data in to provide a traffic signal that appears to be working properly. And lastly, this is a project as before the planning board as part of redevelopment plan. So when it comes to off-site traffic impacts, while we did include it within our study, you know, typically, you know, looking at case law at the Dunkin' Donuts case, again, not to use a competitor's name, it just happens to be one of the reference points in Miss Milanius Law case cases. The Dunkin' Donuts case looks at the fact that permitted uses, such as what we have here, that boards are not to consider off-site traffic impacts. It was already basically contemplated when a redevelopment plan or a use plan was put in place, that a site like this that generates traffic like this could be supported on the roadway network. So again, while I think we included data and perhaps there could have been in an ideal world, a better background, better background of data utilized in this report, I don't believe that it changes this board's jurisdiction or this board's review of this application, as really it's limited to the safety of the driveways and the circulation patterns within the site.
The only thing I would add to that is this board did recommend that we would hold back on approving any future development until the roadway was complete, but because the developer has no control over when the county is going to move on that, it obviously won't hold up this development.
Understood. Thank you, Chairman.
Also, Mr. Conti.
Just Patty.
As far as the traffic study, as you know, that during the last application, it was very adamant about Mill Street being taken care of. And I was, I'm still going to pursue that for every application that comes before in this area. Because the traffic study, as Mr. Sheldon alluded to, it has never been accurate to begin with. It's it's I can sit there and I'm there every single morning at one time to another time, traffic is backed up all the time. And now during COVID, there's no traffic. So that area is very difficult to have a traffic study. So I I agree with you, at least something before, because you're not getting anything accurate right now. So that's why I wanted documented and stated that previously, we had asked for that area to be fixed or looked at, and we did that.
Right, and you did. And we we dedicate the area as stated and agreed to do those improvements at the final phase of development.
Right. So I think that takes care of all the problems as long as this is handled in the future.
Any other questions?
I just have one last question before Matt puts his planner's hat on, just to do you feel that the even considering the the rear portion of that property being developed, that there's adequate ingress and egress to the site a as you propose now?
Yes, I I think that the site can support any development in the rear. Again, obviously, you know, there's been some discussions about certain levels of intensity in the rear of the site. So we have done some due diligence reports to to confirm that there is acceptable ingress and egress, so I could feel comfortable saying that what we've proposed here, the the new right-in, right-out driveway, the existing signalized intersection, you know, the access point on Mill Street can support the site and any future development in the rear, but that is currently contemplated.
I just wanted that to be on the record, because this is your last shot at putting another ingress and egress into into the site.
Yes, it is. And I I believe we're we're sufficiently designed.
Why, Tom, would you suggest another egress?
I think to add another egress to the site would be dangerous.
I agree. I agree. Right, if you want to put your planner's hat on.
Please.
Great. And again, I'll keep this brief because there really isn't a whole lot of variances, you know, that have been discussed or requested for this application. Again, this is a re- re- redevelopment plan, so we're not sitting here and for the planning board, we're seeking a permitted use with some slight deviations, one of which is parking the front yard. And I think we've heard some previous testimony and just reviewing actually the redevelopment plan, it does not prohibit any parking in the front yard. It's actually the underlying zoning that I believe prohibits the parking in the front yard. You've heard testimony from our site engineer related to the fact that really the variance we're seeking is mainly because we've made that dedication along Franklin. That when you're looking at the site, the from the existing curb line to where our parking is, we are be well beyond what typically would have in terms of setback to the your front parking spaces. In addition, there's also a grade difference here. I believe it's, you know, five or six feet. So not only are we offset from the actual curb line a significant amount, there's also a grade difference between the two. So you certainly are not going to have that feel of basically onsite parking lot right up on the public roadway. So again, I don't see there being a real negative impact in terms of the parking in the front yard. We are generally consistent with the Wawa site, which has parking basically in the same location as what we have here for our site. So again, I don't see there being a a negative impact in terms of having this parking in the front yard. Looking at the positive criteria, again, I think that, you know, looking at a criteria G in terms of providing sufficient space, looking at the purposes of the Miss Milanius Law, purpose G, providing sufficient space and appropriate locations for commercial uses. Again, I think we're trying to preserve the remainder area in the front here for other potential, you know, whether it's restaurant or retail uses. And I think that being able to provide the parking around the outside basically allows for a more connected interplay between the two, this retail use and any other potential retail use next to it. So you could have almost like a corridor of of, you know, pedestrian refuge, where you could walk from the Starbucks to whatever the potential other retail establishments get constructed on this site. So I do think that being able to provide appropriate space and putting this parking on the outside is a benefit from that standpoint. And purpose H, encouraging the free flow of traffic. I think, again, having the parking on the outside and not intermixing the drive-through lanes with the parking aisles, I think, is important. And I think, again, providing this parking on the outside allows for better circulation flow within the site. And then, I guess, looking at overall, and this would basically be for all the variances, and I'm going to get to the signage variances next. I think you look at the Pullen case, the the Pullen versus South Plainfield case, which really looked at the fact that you know, when you're looking at justifying variances, we don't necessarily need to say what's so beneficial about each individual variance on its own. It's really what is this overall application about? And I think what we're seeing is this is the next stage of a redevelopment of a site that you obviously had some environmental constraints, you know, had, you know, basically had lived its life as a kind of industrial style use. And now this redevelopment plan is putting it into what I believe is the community's vision and their vision forward for a development that has retail uses and then hopefully the potential future phases of redevelopment, where you could bring other uses to this site and basically create an overall kind of town center approach to this development. So I think when you look at, you know, the overall benefits of this project on a whole, it clearly outweighs the, you know, what I believe is not a significant negative impact to having parking in the front yard. You know, I think when you balance those two clearly benefit, you know, allowing a redevelopment plan, allowing an environmentally constrained site to to get back on the tax rolls, you know, back a back providing, you know, increased value, property value for this community, I think, is a benefit. The last piece is really the signage variances. Obviously, this is a a building that has visibility from four sides. So we are basically seeking the additional wall signs. We have four wall signs permitted for for signs proposed, where two are permitted. Obviously, this is going to be a use that hopefully could bring in traffic both from Franklin, but also as the potential redevelopment in the rear gets put into place, you also want to provide a site that basically functions on all four all four sides of the building. So basically, this is a site that shouldn't just basically facing its back to the future development in the rear. It should basically look pretty similar from the rear as it does from the front, because there hopefully will be significant activity coming from the rear of this property. So again, I believe that providing this signage on all four sides is beneficial from from purpose I, which is promoting the desirable visual environment and purpose H, which is free flow of traffic. Obviously, this is a a roadway where there is significant grade change and significant curvature, being able to provide appropriate signage to the vehicles on the road could slow down, get into the appropriate turning lanes, pull into the site, even with the change of grade that exists out there is important. So I believe promoting appropriate signage, even if it is in excess than what is permitted by the code, I think does provide a positive impact. I don't believe that there's any negative impact to this signage. Again, I don't believe it's obtrusive. I don't believe it's, you know, it's not neon signs that are basically going to be glowing all night into residential neighborhoods. I think it's appropriate based on the design that you see before you now, the exhibit that's still showing on the screen. I I believe again that the signage is 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 fits in well with the architecture and is not overly garish. So overall, I believe that this application can be approved by this board in the fact that we've supported the two C variances that we believe we are required for this application on the front yard setback and the signage variances.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Cherry, you're muted.
Matt, with with the lack of a loading zone, because I don't have my paper in front of me, I can't find it. Is that also a a variance that you're speaking?
Uh, I have, let me just double check if it's a variance or design waiver, but but I will, I will state that I believe you heard the operational testimony regarding it. I guess it looks like it is a variance. It is in that section. Yep. Again, you heard an operational testimony that this is a site that this is an operation that does not require loading space. In fact, I've done a number of Starbucks is probably almost a dozen. I don't remember there being loading spaces for any of those specific sites. Again, their loading occurs in their off-hours. When you're looking at preserving open space, greenery, limiting your impervious coverage, I would normally recommend not adding additional impervious coverage, just to provide a space for a truck that doesn't need a loading space.
That's fine. Okay, I just wanted to clear that up.
Yep.
Any questions for this witness on the board? How about in the public? Anybody have a question? All right, if you, Lisa, if you'd like to move forward.
Yeah, so that that completes our affirmative testimony. I don't know if you want to open it up to the public again, but just to, you know, sum up, I've been involved in this redevelopment project for since the beginning. And this this user that we have here today that we're presenting, this is precisely the type of end user that we were looking to attract to this site. And I really think it's a testament to the township's efforts and what they've been doing lately with their zoning and development, that we do have this corporate user coming here attracted to the township. The the variances that we're requesting are, you know, minor in nature. This is almost a fully conforming use. And I I would just hope that the the board would be inclined to approve this application so that we can move forward.
Right, I would, that's perfect. I would, I was hopeful that you would take that rendering down. So if there if there are no, if there aren't any questions from the border for the public, I would.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to add just one thing. What I would suggest is, assuming you approve this project, is that the engineer mark up some plans with the, you know, with the comments from the board and everyone's comments, and then have a have a Zoom meeting with myself and Mary Ann to go over and make sure before you start, you know, hard doing hard revisions to the plans, okay?
Is Rose available? Mr. Rook, is she available?
Yes, hi, I'm here.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. So we have, I guess we can make them conditions. And as as Tom just asked, maybe make some condition where he can have a meeting to go over some of the conditions, I think, that we we spoke about. I I have a small list of things that we spoke about. If you want to make them conditions to.
Absolutely, we can, we can, you can make a motion to approve based on those conditions and based upon the conclusions reached at the anticipated Zoom meeting.
Right.
You know, with the professionals.
So I I mean, I have a short list that I could read off, and if there's any others I missed, someone can add. One condition that we spoke about was landscaping the along Franklin Avenue. One was the elimination of those two spots along the driveway. Number three, we have an island being created at that entrance. This is one that they know they definitely have to discuss stop signs, stop bars at the entrance. And also, we had one person testify to the potential raised pedestrian walkway that would act as both a way to slow traffic and get pedestrians across that area and potentially a sidewalk at the south entrance along 5 Franklin to get pedestrians up into that site. So I had one, two, three, four. I had six there.
I think we also wanted to have them look at the dumpster location as well.
On the dumpster location, right?
I think there's there's a couple more. There was changing the two pole signs to the monument-style signs for the directional and screening the transformers and it looks like maybe at at one point, I think it was Franz at the beginning that said something about adding sidewalk on the ring road.
He spoke about widening that sidewalk, correct?
So I have you on the monument signs and the the screen, the transformer. I just want to ask Franz if you're in agreement with Mary Ann's condition, if that's what we stated.
It was adding a sidewalk to get from the 17 spaces in the south to the Starbucks, which is also presented in Tom Harris's letter. Yeah.
So we have, what, nine conditions total?
I'm sorry, I might be confusing it. Didn't we also discuss a non ADA compliant walkway from Franklin?
Correct. Yeah, I I did. I mentioned that the walkway on the south side. Whether he could be, he he might be able to make it compliant, he said. He wasn't sure, but it probably won't be.
I, I, I think you also have to add, uh, the addition, when they file the minor subdivision to get, uh, to provide cross easements for all the other uses and, on the property.
We have 10 conditions?
Yes.
Rose, you, you have them all?
Yep, I have them all.
Well, if, if we have all those conditions and if, if no one wants to add any, um, at this time, I would, I would, uh, ask for somebody to make a motion to affirm the applicant, uh, with the conditions and, uh, the three variances.
And also to add, um, they'll be in compliance with the conclusions of the Zoom meeting with the professionals.
Yep, well done.
I'll make that motion?
I'll second it.
Mayor second it, uh, take a roll, please.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Vanda?
Yes.
Mr. Bov? He did say yes. Mr. Corbo?
Yes.
Mr. Graziano?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mrs. Novorato?
Yes.
Mr. Zangary?
Yes.
Mr. Guyans?
Yes.
Okay, application approved.
Thank you all, appreciate your time this evening.
Good luck, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.